Okay, good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. This is now our second council meeting on a video platform, and you will see that in addition to our mayor and council, we have our department heads joining us as well. I'd like to thank all the department heads and city staff for their work at keeping the city running. And once again, we'll be taking public comments by email. And we encourage you to send in your comments on the agenda items as well as for the public comment period. Please bear in mind that our clerk will be receiving those emails in real time and reading them out during the meeting. So we'll make every effort to address all of them. Please send them to cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. Put your full name and your address in the body of the email and indicate the topic of your comment in the subject line. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the open public meeting notice dated April 23, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please. Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston. I see Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Naido.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
President.
Mr. Vartan. President Fox. Here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we'll do the pledge of allegiance. And we'll just do it together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Okay. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting. And the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting tonight is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the bottom of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and the members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been taken to accommodate public input during the meeting. Through public notice, the City Clerk's Office advised the public that anyone wishing to ask a question or make a comment during these proceedings may do so by sending an email to the cityclerk@cityofsummit.org in advance of the meeting and during the meeting. We will do our best to accommodate all members of the public who wish to provide public comment. The individual providing the written comment will be identified and their email will be read or summarized publicly. Administration and/or members of the governing body will provide answers and/or responses when applicable. Those wishing to send an email in anticipation of or during this meeting should include their full name and address in the body of the email. The email subject line should include the date of this council meeting, and only those emails which include the full name of the sender will be read during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we're on to approval of minutes. And we have two sets of minutes from March 24th and April 14th, both the regular and closed session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we're now on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and hello to everyone at home who is watching us. First of all, an Overlook Medical Center update. Our community is doing an excellent job of staying at home and self-isolating. And evidence of that are the numbers we received today over at Look Medical Center. At its highest point, there were 243 COVID-19 positive patients on April 14th. In contrast, today there are 160. While it is difficult to adhere to physical distancing and to stay at home, it is working, and we are seeing positive results. I would like to provide an update on the Sustained Summit Fund, the fundraising effort for local small businesses in Summit. So far, the community has generously donated over $270,000 of the $400,000 goal. 150 businesses have applied for grants, and 117 were approved. Grants range from $1,250 to $5,000. And at this point, $251,000 are being distributed to the merchants. It's been a difficult time for our local merchants, but hopefully this will help. Police Officer Pysek, as you know, was in an automobile accident. And it was wonderful to make the trip to Morristown Medical Center yesterday for the discharge of Anthony Pysek following surgery to repair hip and femur fractures. A little over one week ago, Officer Pysek was monitoring a motor vehicle pursuit of a stolen motor vehicle from a neighboring jurisdiction when the suspect vehicle crossed the center line and collided head-on with the police vehicle. I was joined by our Summit Police, Fire, and EMS colleagues and Town of Morristown officers, who cheered as Officer Pysek was wheeled to his transport home. We wish him a quick and easy recovery. He'll be at home undergoing physical therapy. The Summit Farmers Market is going to open on May 10th, which is Mother's Day. It is an essential service, as deemed by the Governor's Office. We came up with detailed guidelines for both vendors and for customers. And they sent them to the Governor's Office, and they approved them and, in fact, encouraged us to please try to have a socially-distanced and appropriate safety way to have the farmers market. So a couple of things, and all this information can be found on the Summit Downtown, Inc. website, which is summitt downtown.org. And it will also be on the city information website, as well as I'll put on my Facebook page. It's going to be relocated to Lot 1, which is on the corner of DeForest and Woodland. And that's because Lot 1 is larger than the other lot, the prior lot, giving us an opportunity to have 40 vendors that will be six feet apart. People will enter at the gate, the entry gate on DeForest. And they will line up along DeForest, six feet apart. And I've spoken with Aaron Schrager, and he is going to have the DPW guys paint stripes on the sidewalk and within the parking lot itself, along the pathway, along the route, so people understand what six-foot distance looks like. So the lineup inside, there will be people at the beginning, at the entrance and at the exit to let people in gradually. We'll only have a certain amount of people in there at any given time. We are encouraging families, just have one family member per family. We're encouraging them to spend about 15 minutes in there. You'll enter on DeForest, as I said, and follow a one-way route, not unlike what you're doing at the grocery store. And then exit at the pay station at the Alley and Woodland Avenue. We are not allowing dogs. We love dogs at the farmers market, but it's just, it's a distraction. Particularly if you're by yourself, it's pretty hard to make a purchase and also have a dog leash in your hand. Customers all must wear masks. The vendors will be wearing masks and gloves. Customers will not be picking up produce, but rather pointing. The vendors will be putting the, picking up the items. Vendors all must have contactless points of purchase, which would be either Venmo, something like that, or credit cards. They will accept cash, but they have to also have contactless ways to pay. The hours will be the same, eight to one. The market runs through November 22nd. Who knows what the future will bring and whether we will be able to change a location or increase the number of vendors? We don't know. We are going to encourage the vendors to have the ability for people to purchase items online in advance and then just pick up their items when they get to the farmers market. We're not going to do that for the first couple of weeks. We just thought, let's just get through this beginning, see how it goes. And I've met with Lieutenant Richel, who we talked, and we talked about with the police function. So, you know, we may tweak this, but it's a good, the guidelines are strong, and I think that it will be, it'll be a nice breath of fresh air. And one can argue that if you do the social distancing properly and we have other safeguards in place, that it's at least as safe as going to a supermarket because it's an open environment. And then lastly, there are several new Storytime episodes on Hometown TV or HTV and the City of Summit YouTube channel this week. I'm enjoying reading and recording more stories, these stories, and I'll do more next week. And thank you very much to everyone who has indicated that you're enjoying the books that I'm reading remotely. I'm thoroughly enjoying it. I just wish I were actually really with the kids, but that's for another day. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrators.
Good evening, everyone. Let's start off with an important finance note. Second quarter property tax payments. They are due this Friday, May 1st. The last day to pay without a penalty is May 11th of this year. While the Tax Office at City Hall is closed to the public due to COVID-19 restrictions, please access online payment options on the City of Summit website at cityofsummit.org or use the Dropbox located on the outside wall at the parking lot entrance to City Hall. Please contact the Office of the Tax Collector at 908-273-6403 with any questions. The New Jersey State Court has issued an order for municipal court sessions to resume, beginning yesterday, actually, April 27th, with the consent of all parties. Effective May 11th, all sessions will proceed remotely by video conference or phone. Details for Summit, New Providence, and Brookly Heights will be issued soon for our shared court. And for any other information you feel you need, please go to New Jersey, it's NJCourts.gov. Happy to report, the Department of Community Services has expanded the number of appointments for the Municipal Transfer Station on Tuesdays and Fridays from 7:30 to 2:30. Each 15-minute appointment must be scheduled in advance on the city website. Please go to cityofsummit.org/transferstation. If you do not have online access, please call 908-273-6404 to schedule an appointment. And then finally, last Thursday, the Communications Office launched a redesigned website homepage and interior pages for community services, police, fire, parking, Clerk's Office, and emergency management. Although it wasn't ideal timing to be taking this on over the last couple of months, but we felt that it was important for the community. And the new design, I believe, allows for improved usability and content organization. If you've not seen it, please go to our website. And tomorrow, Wednesday, April 29th, the Department of Community Programs is launching its newly redesigned site. So you can view that at summitcommunityprograms.com. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I had a few other items that I wanted to update the public on. First of all, single-use plastic restrictions are going to be postponed. So the enforcement of these restrictions that were set to be in effect on May 1st has been postponed until the public health emergency has ended. Updated information on when these restrictions will be put in place will be issued. And look for information on the city's website, and we will be updating on that. Next item is unemployment information. So the Department of Labor has created a new web portal that allows New Jersey residents to contact the Department of Labor directly. It is a potentially helpful tool for residents who may have questions about their unemployment applications. Go to myunemployment nj.gov. State recovery information. Yesterday, Governor Murphy announced the road back restoring economic health through public health. And that's a phased approach to restarting state recovery. Today, he announced the implementation team. There are six principles and key metrics guiding the process for lifting restrictions that can be found at covid19 nj.gov. New Jersey Stay-at-Home Executive Order, in effect since March 21st, remains in effect in its entirety until further notice. Information can be found about the plan and the committee, the implementation team, and other details can be found on the city's COVID-19 webpage as well. So with that in mind, and with beautiful weather on the way, I'd like to remind everyone to please stay the course and continue to practice safe social distancing. We've made incredible progress so far, and through, only through continued vigilance will we see this epidemic safely end. So I ask you again to stay safe, stay strong. Thank you. And now on to presentations. We have our emergency management coordinator, Don Nelson, here to fill us in on what's going on with the emergency management.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, Council citizens of Summit. I want to apologize in advance. I have a very bad internet connection, so I apologize. But just some background information real fast. January 21st, the first case of coronavirus was reported in the United States. They're disputing that right now, but that's the first reported known case. First case in New Jersey was on March 4th of 2020. On March 9th, the state of New Jersey declared an emergency, state of emergency. As of today, April 28th, there are 113,000 reported cases, positive cases of coronavirus in New Jersey. And unfortunately, there are 6,400 deaths. And these are approximate numbers. There are 12,000 cases in Union County, again, approximate numbers. And in Summit, there's a report of 168 cases in town. So the numbers have gone up rather quickly statewide in a small number of days. But as far as Summit OEM is concerned, we're working closely with all emergency responding agencies, PD, Fire, and First Aid Squad. They have their emergency operations plans in place, and they're functioning well. As the mayor said earlier, the hospital is doing well, and we touch bases with them every week, and they're giving us positive feedback. And it looked like their numbers are coming down, but more to follow on that. We've been reaching out to other agencies, other vendors, I should say, to try and get some PPE with not much success. We've been requesting some from the county and the state, but unfortunately, PPE is being diverted to emergency medical centers, hospitals, and the like, and long-term care facilities. Working closely with the Regional Board of Health, Megan Avalon, and she is a great resource. She really helps us out, and she really does stay in touch. We had an OEM meeting today with department heads and other agencies, and she gave us some background on the work that her crew does. And it's more than just crunchy numbers. They actually, when they do tracing, they actually talk to people, and they sit down, and the people that they're talking to, you know, talk about the loved ones that have been infected or have passed away, and they get all the stories. So it's not just a matter of crunchy numbers and moving on. They're actually being very personable and talking to these people. So it's a lot, it's hard work on their part. I really, my hats are off to the Board of Health members. They really do a lot of hard work. As Council President mentioned, the mayor, the governor, put out six principles. We're waiting for more guidance from the state on those. May 15th, we'll know more from the state as far as what we're moving on with schools and things like that. So as far as Summit OEM is concerned, we're maintaining our contacts. We're trying to move along. We're working on grants to get some emergency equipment. And I just, again, I have to put my hat off, tip my hat to the department heads in the City of Summit. They're doing a fantastic job. So I'll keep up the good work. And nice free time.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief Nelson. And thank you to the whole OEM team. We appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. So now we're moving on to the, oh, wait. Does anyone have any comments for Deputy Chief Nelson? Or questions?
I just want to quickly comment that the entire OEM team is just working round the clock. EMS is in there, Fire, the police, and Deputy Chief Nelson is sort of leading the team. So, and of course, communications. They're putting information out all the time. So, you know, I'm only hearing really good things from members of the community and about the work that our OEM team is doing. And of course, all the essential workers at City Hall. So I just want to thank everyone. This is a tough time, and everyone's doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor, you and your team, too.
Madam Clerk, are there any questions from the public before we move on?
None received, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other questions or comments from members of council? Okay, so thank you so much, Don, for your presentation. At this point, we'll move on to public comments. So members of the public have the opportunity to comment on any matter not on the agenda. Do we have any comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Council President, two were received today. I will start with the first one received from Summit resident Carl Loscher from 14 Lenox Road. And he writes, "Given that students are studying at home and many people are working from home, will you make some modifications to the limit, to limit the hours that loud outdoor equipment, parentheses, leaf blowers in particular, can be used? Students are taking online classes. Parents are on work calls at home. It reduces productivity." Westfield, New Jersey, has already made some modifications. And he includes a link to a New York Times article.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Loscher, I understand your concerns. You know, we're all struggling with the same issue. But we have been, but we do, and we do have limits on noise. We have a noise ordinance that limits when work can happen. And it's weekdays between, I believe, 8:00 and 8:00, and weekends between 9:00 and 6:00. So we do have that in place. But we've been advised by our attorney about whether, on this issue, and I'm going to hand it over to our attorney, Matt Jacoby, to address this.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, when Governor Murphy issued his various executive orders, one of them deemed certain employees or professions essential services. And one of those essential services is landscapers. So we're all experiencing it a little differently because usually most people are there at work or school, and landscapers are doing their job. But they are deemed essential services in accordance with executive order issued by Governor Murphy due to this pandemic closure. And so we can't pass or change any of our laws that would in any way restrict employees who are deemed essential employees during this pandemic. So my advice to the governing body is to maintain our noise ordinance and make sure that the landscapers are complying with what's been in place for many years.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jacoby. Yes, Councilmember Little.
Thank you. I just wanted to assure the public, too, that we've been discussing this issue at our weekly TAP meetings and community service meetings. And we will be looking into whatever modifications we think are appropriate after this immediate crisis is over and when we're allowed to do so by the governor. I also, some people have raised an issue whether there's a health issue with the war during this time and whether it could potentially spread virus. And we did consult with Megan Avalon at the Health Department, and she said there was no evidence of that. So I just wanted to reassure anyone who was wondering about that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, I think we're ready for the next comment, Madam Clerk.
The next and last email was received this afternoon from Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. And she has three questions. The first, can the council please confirm the latest budget is available online? And that any pamphlets mailed to households will reflect the latest view on revenue assumptions for 2020, parentheses, impact on pool and golf revenues?
So Madam Clerk, I think we'll take it one question at a time just for simplicity's sake. So the answer is yes, the latest budget is available online. And I'll hand it over to Councilmember Vartan to address the rest of the question.
Sure, thank you, thank you, Council President. So thank you, Eileen, for the questions. The budget is available online. That's the budget that was introduced in March. So if you go to cityofsummit.org, just search budget. It's the first thing that pops up. Or you can go Government and then select Finance and Taxes. And there you'll find the full budget, which includes departmental goals included in addition to the shorter budget presentation. On the second part of your question, the budget snapshot is based on the budget as it was introduced in March. It will show expected revenue for the pool and the golf course based on essentially pre-health crisis assumptions. We don't know yet what the Governor's Office will or will not allow us to open, but we hope to receive guidance soon. I do think that it's reasonable to expect at a minimum that the golf course would have. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could we, the next part of the question, please?
The second question reads, "Under the mayor's leadership, will the Sustained Summit Fund have a carve-out for funds for women and/or minority business owners?"
Mayor Radies, would you like to address that?
Sure, thank you very much, Council President. Thank you for your question, Eileen. I don't know if you were tuned in when we were doing the reports, but the Sustained Summit Fund has received 150 applications. They approved 117, providing grants of 251,000 dollars. There will be a second round of grants. I'm not on that committee, but my understanding is that the committee looked at the criteria, two criteria. One, the number of employees in each, of each business, and the rent that they have to pay. And they divided the money up. They divided the businesses based upon that into small, medium, large, and extra-large. Minority and/or ethnicity and gender were not considered. However, I do know that several of the grants and businesses were given to women-owned businesses as well as minorities. But the two criteria that were based upon were number of employees and rent. So there will be another round because there is more money, somewhat, some more money in the fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And Madam Clerk, could we have the last part of the question, please?
The last question is, "Which grants, if any, are the council applying for in order to support Summit's downtown business vitality in lieu of collecting federal funds from the coronavirus stimulus bill?"
Thank you for your question, Eileen. I think at this point, any grant information available for small businesses, that would have to be applied for by those specific businesses. And we have been providing as much information as we can to businesses to help them find the grants that they can apply for. Any grants that the city or SDI can apply for, we will. So far, I have not heard of any. And I'll open it up on the floor if anyone else knows of any grants that we can apply for at this point to help downtown businesses. All right, I'm taking that as, we are not aware of any at this time. But thank you for your question. Are there any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, we just received another email. This one from Carol Bianchi, who is Summit's representative from JCPN. And she just wants to send her best wishes to the City of Summit and to the mayor and council, from Carol.
Thank you so much, Carol. And I will speak for everyone and send you our best wishes as well. And hope you and your family are all happy and healthy. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, so moving on, that closes the public comment section. And we will move on to resolutions. So our first set of resolutions is from Safety and Health. Councilmember Hairston, would you like to start with the first, with the first resolution?
Unmute.
Unmute, please.
I must have put it right back on. Thank you, Madam Council President. I am very pleased to introduce Resolution 7127, which will confirm the appointment of the new chief of police, as was discussed in our closed session earlier this evening. As the public knows, on May 31, 2020, Robert Weck will retire as the Chief of Police of Summit, having had a very distinguished career here. And as our city code sets forth, the mayor, who I love to refer to as the Police Commissioner, gets to make the appointment of the new Chief of Police with the confirmation of common counsel. And I, before I go on, I just want to say that we have had a good, or will have an opportunity to recognize Chief Weck, who we all know was out ill and is recovering well. And, but at this time, our mayor has advised us that she wishes to appoint Captain Andrew Bartolati to the position of Chief of Police effective June 1, 2020. I have had the great pleasure of getting to know Captain Bartolati as the officer in charge during Chief Weck's time out recovering. He joined the Safety Committee during the height of our emergency management planning, and he hit the ground running extraordinarily. He has this very thoughtful and thorough approach that is very calming in a time of what is a global pandemic. And I am very pleased to move this resolution for adoption.
I second.
Okay, I'm, I'll turn, I'll turn this over to Madam Mayor for a comment first.
Thank you very much, Council President. I am very pleased to recommend Captain Andrew Bartolati to the role of Chief of Police. He has the respect of his department and everyone with whom he has worked. So, a little bit of background for members of the public who are listening in, watching us. Captain Bartolati joined the Summit Police Department on April 4, 2000, after serving two years with the Manasquan Police Department in Monmouth County. In 2004, he was assigned to the Detective Bureau, where he served for a period of three and a half years. During his tenure as a detective, Captain Bartolati completed several assignments with the Union County Prosecutor's Office, including the Auto Theft Task Force, the High Tech Crimes Task Force, and the Arson Investigation Unit Task Force. In 2007, Captain Bartolati was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, having been assigned to the Patrol Bureau as the Evening Shift Supervisor, and then in 2011, to the Detective Bureau supervising criminal investigations. In 2011, Captain Bartolati was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant and tasked with commanding the Patrol Bureau before being reassigned in 2012 to command the Detective Bureau overseeing all criminal investigations within the city. During his tenure as a Lieutenant, Captain Bartolati was nominated and attended the FBI's Law Enforcement Executive Development Course at Princeton University, and graduated from the New Jersey State Association of Captains of Police Command and Leadership Academy. Captain Bartolati was again promoted in June of 2012 to the rank of Captain and assigned as the Divisional Commander of the Support Services Division, where for the last eight years, he has overseen and commanded the department's juvenile, community policing, traffic records, and field training units, and has spearheaded the department's advancement in technology. During his career, Captain Bartolati earned both his bachelor's and master's degrees from Fairleigh Dickinson University. In furtherance of his professional development in 2015, he attained certification as an accredited Command Executive by the New Jersey State Association of Captains of Police. Taking his professional development internationally, in 2016, Captain Bartolati was selected as one of 15 law enforcement executives to represent the state of New Jersey and train at the International College of Policing in Great Britain. In 2017, Captain Bartolati represented the City of Summit and Police Department with distinction when he was selected as one of six law enforcement executives from the state of New Jersey to attend the prestigious FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, and train alongside some of the world's most accomplished police leaders. During his career, Captain Bartolati has committed himself in service to others, both through the residents and visitors of Summit and his fellow officers and coworkers with the Police Department and the city government. I'm very, very proud and pleased to recommend Captain Bartolati to be the Chief of Police. We have had a long and distinguished career in, in Chief Weck, and we wish him all the very best in his retirement. I am confident that Captain Bartolati will step in to the chief's role and do a job that is both a credit to him and to every member of this community. So, I ask council's advice and consent on this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll now open it up to any council members who would like to speak. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Madam President. As the other council member on the Safety Committee, I've also had the opportunity to get to know Captain Bartolati over the last couple of months. And as a former prosecutor, I had the distinct honor of working with a number of incredibly talented and dedicated police chiefs over my former career, and I have long said that Chief Weck was one of the very, very best. Having said that, in working with Captain Bartolati over the last couple of months, I am more than confident that he's going to fill Captain, Chief Weck's very impressive shoes. He came into this in the middle of just a crisis of epic proportions, really something that has, has not been known in the city before, and has just done a tremendous job. Between the global pandemic and then the incident last week with Officer Pysek, he's just shown complete professionalism and dedication and knowledge and just a really great demeanor and presence in the City of Summit. So, I'm just really confident that we are in great hands, and that this is going to be a really good transition for the City of Summit.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to take a moment to say a couple of words about this resolution to appoint Andrew Bartolati as the next Chief of Police. Integrity, courage, duty, loyalty, respect, and honor are the values of the Summit Police Department. They are also undoubtedly some of the words that come to mind when describing Andrew Bartolati. On, on paper, he's extremely impressive. As Mayor Rades mentioned, he has a master's degree, studies the executive leadership at the College of Policing in Scotland, graduated from the FBI National Academy, and he's also participated in multiple task forces. Speaking with Captain Bartolati in person, he is even more impressive. He is passionate about the people that he serves and the people who serve alongside of him. He will work to expand upon the community-centered style of policing that has made the department so strong. He understands that leadership is about balance, and he is committed to constant improvement. Chief Weck was diagnosed with coronavirus, and we wish him a speedy recovery, and we miss him very much. But we have been also been very fortunate to have Captain Bartolati step up during this crisis. Beyond what we could read about his career, or beyond what we could ask him in an interview, we have seen him act swiftly and with outstanding grace under pressure. He immediately implemented a new schedule for the department. He has been tested by an officer-involved car crash, and he's communicated regularly with the public. We are very, very lucky to know for certain that we are going from one great chief to another. On a personal note, it's been an absolute pleasure to participate in this process. I've been an admirer of the Summit Police since the sixth grade. When I first met Andrew Bartolati, when he was an instructor during the Summit Police Youth Academy, it's my honor to wholeheartedly support Mayor Rades' spectacular appointment of Andrew Bartolati to be our next Chief of Police. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else have any comments? Councilmember Naido?
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to say a few words. I think the appointment of a Chief of Police is probably the most significant appointment that can be made by both mayor and the advice and consent of council. This is a role that undoubtedly affects every single resident as far as who actually runs that department. The Chief of Police job is not simply an administrative job, but it is a public-facing job. I had the opportunity to talk to Captain Bartolati, and what I found in that person was a very thoughtful individual who approaches the position with insight and knowledge, not only of the functioning of the, what is necessary within the department, but also a person who has an understanding of this community. And I think that's very important. People have referenced Chief Weck, who I care about deeply, and who I think has done a fabulous job. And he has certainly huge shoes, but I would take a little different tack. I don't think Captain Bartolati is there to fill Chief Weck's shoes. I think he will have his own shoes to fill very nicely. I think he will come at this job in a thoughtful, intelligent manner that will make our city proud. And so, I congratulate the mayor in her appointment and enthusiastically support Andrew Bartolati for the position, and I look forward to seeing how much he accomplishes for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naido. Any other comments from council? Okay. So, I think my colleagues have covered much of what I wanted to say, but I'm very pleased to support Captain Bartolati's appointment as Police Chief. He has served as the officer in charge for the past month while Chief Weck has been out on sick leave, and in my conversations with Captain Bartolati, and also watching him serve in the role of officer at, at officer in charge, I have been very impressed with his management and leadership skills, his understanding of the needs of the community, and his unflappable ability in a very challenging time for the city. I look forward to working with Captain Bartolati in the future, and I second my colleagues' comments about our confidence in his ability to do this job. And with that, if no one else has any comments, were there any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President, no comments.
Okay, so, I'll call for a vote, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome aboard, Captain Bartolati. Okay, so, I guess we're on to, it's a little anticlimactic, we're on to Safety and Health Resolution Number Two. Captain Bartolati, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Kind of awkward in this setting, but please go ahead.
Just, just a brief moment. Mayor Rades, Council President Fox, members of council, City Administrator Rogers, I want to thank you all for your kind words and for the confidence you've expressed in me, and I look forward to working with you on this new journey. I especially want to thank all of you for your unwavering support of the Police Department, especially during this current health crisis. There's no doubt 2020 has already proven to be a historic year in which we, as a people and as a community, have faced heartache and uncertainty. It has also been a testament to the resolve and the community bond that this great city is known for. And as we embark on this new chapter, I promise an open, accountable, and accessible police department that conducts itself with the utmost professionalism and the highest level of integrity. It has been an honor to serve this community for the last 20 years, and I look forward to continuing that service as your city's next Police Chief. And I thank you again for your kind words and support, and for the support of our department.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your thoughts, and we really look forward to working with you in your new role. So, with that, we'll move on to Safety and Health Resolution Number Two. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I am introducing Resolution 7137 to authorize the location and date change for Summit Downtown Inc.'s 2020 Farmers Market. And I hope the public heard the very thorough introduction that our mayor gave regarding the Summit Markets opening, because it was thoroughly vetted in the Safety and Health Committee. I appreciate Captain Bartolati, Chief, Chief-to-be on June 1, raising this as a public health crisis that we're experiencing now. And so, due to this ongoing pandemic, Summit Downtown, Inc. decided to move the weekly farmers market from Lot 1, from Lot 2 to Lot 1 on DeForest Avenue. And this location was selected since it is the largest of the three shopper lots on DeForest Avenue. So, it makes it easier for the vendors to space themselves, as well as the shoppers, and as the mayor discussed, really practicing physical distancing, social distancing as we know it, and conformance to all of the state and the CDC guidelines. This layout was vetted not only by the Police Department and Community Services, Parking Services, but the governor's office, who act, who encouraged this move. The Division of Public Works will be assisting and setting up, and will be making sure that our visitors are going in orderly. And so, the first week of the market will be on May 10, as we heard the mayor say, and we'll be paying very close attention to it. And I am pleased to move this resolution for adoption.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Mayor Rades. I want to also thank SDI leadership and, and the Police Department. Just a ton of work has gone into this. I also want to thank Rita, our Parking Services Director, and there, and her staff for their flexibility in being willing to work there and make sure that things are being done in an orderly way. I would also just like to encourage some patience from members of the public. You know, I think that it's going to be really exciting for us to have this opportunity back again. You know, this is normally a really social, really wonderful way that the people of Summit come together. That's really not what it's for anymore. It's really going to just be for a safer, hopefully, better way to get access to produce and goods. But we really have to take it seriously that we have to follow the very specific guidelines that are going to be put forward. And we have to just recognize the fact that we may have to wait a little bit longer, and the way that we exactly want to do it may not be exactly what we get. But I think overall, it's going to be a great thing for Summit, and I want to thank everyone again for all the work that's gone into it.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to also put in that I am also very much in favor of this resolution. I have two immediate family members who are high-risk individuals, so I'm probably on the more conservative side. And I have to say that all of my concerns and wishes for safety measures have been put in place with this plan. I've been monitoring Facebook closely in regards to the comments on the opening the farmers market, as well as discussing in person with a number of friends. And I do think that the safety measures have been very well thought out and are, and this will make the market safer, safer than any other way to, to get food during this time. One of the points that hasn't been brought up that I just wanted to reiterate as well is that the farmers market is also an opportunity to support our local farmers and food producers, which is not only really important in these uncertain economic times, but also, I'm sure many of you have seen a lot of news articles about possible disruptions to the national food chain and, and other food supply distribution. And so, maintaining these strong ties with our local farmers and food supply is really also crucial to going forward. So, I am very much in favor of this resolution, and I really want to thank all the thought and careful planning that went into doing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Any other comments from members of council? Madam Clerk, are there any comments from members of the public?
No comments received, Madam President.
Okay, so, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Councilmember Hairston, the third Safety and Health Resolution, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Our, I am introducing our third and last Safety and Health Resolution Number 7119 to authorize submission of a grant application and to execute a grant agreement in the amount of $15,000 to the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic and Safety Enforcement and Education Fund. This is a routine application process that we engage in annually, and this is for our fiscal year 2021 New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety Pedestrian Enforcement Education Fund Grant to improve pedestrian state safety at targeted locations throughout the city. The Police Department will apply for funding in the amount of $15,000, of which 14 will be used to fund. Funding will go towards overtime, single officer details at, to target pedestrian crash site hotspots, and this is from 2019 crash data. The remaining $1,000 will be used for printed materials and this is from 2019 crash data. The remaining $1,000 will be used for printed materials, which will be used to educate all on pedestrian safety in our community. And so I am moving this resolution for adoption.
I second.
All right, any comments from members of council? All right, any comments from the public?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. I think this is a great initiative. We've spoken throughout the years about our concern about pedestrian safety and ways that we can make that experience safer for residents. And so I hope we get this grant, and thank you for your work in applying for it. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now, moving on, we have one resolution from Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 7140 to authorize the extension of temporary parking rules through May 26, 2020. As part of our ongoing effort to support local businesses, we approved Resolution Number 39273 at our March 24 council meeting that waived the need for parking permits and daily parking fees at street meters and kiosks in all municipal lots and garages in the CRBD. This resolution extends all of these temporary parking rules through May 26, 2020. A few reminders for everyone. Time limits are in effect to allow for turnover of spaces at street meters, and illegal parking will be enforced for the safety of all concerned. Number two, this resolution also created curbside pickup-only parking spaces for patrons of businesses offering takeout or pickup service. These spots are limited to 15 minutes. Number three, if there is a need to park longer than the allotted time at the meter, the parking lots on DeForest Avenue can be used for extended parking so we can maintain sufficient turnover of street parking spaces. Number four, at the end of the aforementioned period, common council will reevaluate the parking needs in the CRBD and make a determination as to whether to further extend the period that the temporary rules are in effect. Also, Parking Services will be keeping a daily count of all lots to help us determine next steps when the Governor's stay-at-home order is lifted. For more information on the Governor's plan to restart the New Jersey economy, please visit our refreshed city website at cityofsummit.org. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? All right, any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No comments, Madam President.
Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, we've got two Capital Projects and Community Services Resolutions. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The first Capital Projects Resolution is Number 7101 to award the bid for the Summit Safe Streets to Transit Project. This is a bid to do a number of safety improvements to four intersections approaching the New Jersey Transit train station. The intersections include Summit Avenue and Franklin Place, Broad Street and Summit Avenue, Maple Street and Union Place, and Maple Street and Railroad Avenue. And the improvements include addition of rapid rectangular flashing beacons, lighting additions, sidewalk repairs, and road surface treatments to highlight the intersections. As a point of interest, I believe this was the first time that we did a bid opening outdoors in the courtyard to with social distancing and also state requirements. So that was an interesting way to open the bids, and the winning bid was for Zucaro Inc., who has worked with the city in the past and done a great job. So we are asking to award the bid to Zucaro, and I would note also that the entire amount of the project is being covered by the grant. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, Capital Projects Resolution Number Two, please, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution Two is Number 7118, and this is to authorize submission for a 2020 Association of New Jersey Environmental Commission's Open Space Stewardship Grant Application. This grant application is being submitted at the request of the Summit Environmental Commission, who would like to pursue a grant opportunity from the New Jersey Environmental Commission to support the installation of a rain garden at the new Summit Community Center. This grant requires in-kind services of volunteer hours, which will be provided by the Environmental Commission, and also some in-kind services from Department of Community Services, who has agreed to do the work. And I ask that we approve this resolution for the submission of this grant.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No comments received, Madam President.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So we're now on to the consent agenda. Generally, we take the agenda and vote on it as a whole unless any members of the public or members of council would like to speak on any matter. Do I hear any? Does anyone have any comments on any of the matters? Is there anything from the public on the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
No comments, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we're now on to council members' comments and new business. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I have three things. So first, the Union County Board of Chosen Freeholders met this last Thursday, April 23rd. They amended the county operating budget to pull funds from their surplus and keep spending flat, which effectively creates a 0% increase in the Union County tax. Over the last several years, our common council has created municipal budgets that reflect the values of transparency, efficiency, and fiscal responsibility. We believe that we must maintain and expand excellent government services while keeping the community affordable. I'm thankful for the freeholders' decision to amend their budget, and I sent a statement similar to this one to the meeting to be read during the public comment last Thursday. Second, just a reminder that anyone can request to vote by mail. Visit unioncountyvotes.com and print out an application and mail it in. Also a reminder that the June 2 primary is now July 7, and that the dates for registration, party affiliation changes, and applications to vote by mail have all been moved. So visit unioncountyvotes.com for more info about those dates. And third, I would just like to mention that the City of Summit lost two good men who were truly committed to service since our last council meeting, Dr. Don Geddis and Carl Loman. Dr. Geddis was principal at Summit High School. Carl Loman was a lawyer, and both were life members of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. I would like to extend condolences to their families in this incredibly difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to just raise for the public's attention that our library is in business and is really open online for engagement. And just to shout out a few things that they're participating in, there's the Phone the Librarian, Monday through Friday, and they are offering a wide range of information and referral services to help you find out about COVID-19, ways to volunteer, ways Sorry, can you also still see me? Okay, and how to use eBooks, find resources, and the list goes on. There's At Home with the Library for Adults, and that is on Fridays at 5:00 PM to 5:45, where they'll be going over Sew It, teaching you how to sew, and that's on Friday, May 1, and Friday, May 15. Also, Explore Your World Mini Courses for Adults, and that's on Fridays from 10:00 AM to 12:00, May 15, 22nd, 29th, June 5. And just wanting you to know, you can go online and find these many items that the library is doing online for the community to take advantage of for children, adults of all ages. And the last thing I want to mention, Council President, is the Lackawanna Coalition is back in business. This is a group of municipalities who have representatives and members who are organized to help New Jersey Transit be the best that they can be. And they do a lot of research and writing. And I joined the group last month and got to attend their meeting, and just wanted to let the community know that there is a group that deals with the state on matters of New Jersey Transit, and we know that they will, we intend for it to be helpful as we go into the redevelopment project. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Councilmember Naido?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to give a shout out to the Summit Public Art, which is holding a chalk competition this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. So cross our fingers for good weather. The idea of the chalk competition, open to all ages, take some chalk, go out to your driveway or sidewalk, create a great picture. Either send the picture to the summitpublicarts@gmail.com, or tag them on Instagram, and you may win a $50 gift certificate either to a business in Summit Downtown or to give it to your favorite Summit charity of your choice. But it's a great opportunity for members of the public to hopefully be nice weather to go out and do some drawings and let your neighbors see your artistic talent. So I also just want to give another shout out to Summit Public Arts, who's been actively involved in trying to come up with creative ways of still having the public engaged with art in town, which is as important now as ever. So thank you.
You, Councilmember Naido. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman?
Yeah, I was just going to, you know, this past Friday was supposed to be Arbor Day, and I saw a number of people out cleaning, and thank everyone for that. But from the Shade Tree Committee, we still have some trees that we are going to be planting over the next couple of weeks, and then we'll be planting trees again come fall. This rain probably would have been great for the trees if we would have had them in beforehand, but you know, the Shade Tree Committee is still honoring the Arbor Day, the process, if you will. So we hope to be having some trees planted on our streets.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowman. And I believe there is also going to be some work with the Environmental Commission, the Roots to Rivers Program, where they have some trees that they'll be planting probably in the next month or two. So we will, and then more in the fall. So I think we'll be looking at a lot of new trees, which is great.
That's true.
Any other comments from members of council? Okay, well, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.